Over there, if so, we could start to pull up the slides. That would be great. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's Co City School District Board of Education meeting, and I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:06 PM. If you could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will turn things over for a roll call, please.
Mrs. Giller?
Here.
Mr. Kastas.
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Dion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Annaly?
Arriving momentarily.
And Mr. Nolan?
Here.
And I will turn this over to Ms. Peggy O'Shea.
Good evening. I just want to point out our pictures again, taken by Aaron Cagwin. The first photo is from Harmony Hill's recent Frozen Day, and many students had outfits that featured frozen characters. Classes turned, stopping by to get their photo taken with a giant who played Vol Bora. So lots of fun. And then the second and third pictures are from Van Skype's Character Count celebration. They played a school-wide game of Bingo. Classrooms tuned in via Zoom. And the third picture is Mrs. DeChiro calling the numbers from her office. So just a couple of examples of how our schools are safely celebrating the holidays as well as achievements and positive behavior. So. So as always, if you have questions, submissions for public comment can be emailed to So tonight, I'm going to discuss micro cluster zones and testing. But before I do, I want to briefly talk about some recent events. As you know, we've had three positive cases of COVID this past week. We've sent out communication. Each time, the principals have contacted any impacted staff and parents first before district-wide communication now to, so that everyone had been previously contacted. So I know this impacts students and staff who then have to quarantine from precautionary measures, which I know is difficult. I do want to share, though, that there is no indication of any within-building spread with all of our cases. And I think this is a testament to the safety protocols being followed and the cleaning measures. Also, as you may have seen in the news lately, for districts that have begun testing, the percentage of positive cases in schools are much lower than in the surrounding areas. So I just wanted to to mention that, so everyone would understand that these are isolated cases and not spread throughout the schools. So in terms of micro cluster testing, there is some current guidance for schools. You may have heard of Governor Cuomo's conversations regarding yellow, orange, and red zones and the guidance that we have to follow if we wish to remain open, if our geographic area is designated as one of these zones. And at this point, we are not in any of these zones, but I wanted to give you a heads up in terms of our plans. So for schools in yellow zones, to remain open, we would have to test 20% of the students and staff who are in person, so not our virtual learners. So the 20% is based on in-person over a two-week period following the announcement of a designation. And then if after that testing period, the results show that we are lower than the surrounding area, the geographical area, then we can stay open and we do not need to continue testing. If it's higher than the current surrounding area, then the seven-day positivity rate, then we have to test 20% the next two weeks. And I'm going. And there's some different guidance for red and orange, which is on the next slide.
Can I ask two quick questions?
Yes.
As far as testing goes, is there, I assume there's probably some sort of cost to the district? And is there like an order of magnitude that we understand of what, how much does it cost?
We have ordered tests through the Albany County Department of Health, and we have received tests at no cost. I'll describe that a little bit later. I'm going to talk about our testing plan. So it's, but there is, there is no cost for the tests.
You said no cost?
No cost for the test that we receive.
Okay.
Explain a little bit more.
And then the second question I had was, when we talked about like geographic zone, is that Albany County for us?
It's Albany County. I know there's been some discussion about, could it be by zip code? Could it be more of a condensed area? So we're not, we're not certain, but we are within Albany County.
Okay. And then when it says like, we would need to test until it's lower than the surrounding areas, that's the same term that they're talking about, geographic area? When they say surrounding area, it's the same?
Yes, geographic area. So then, thank you. You're welcome. So then if we were located, if our surrounding geographical area was an orange zone for us to remain open, we would again have to test 20% of the students and staff over the course of the month period following the designation. But this would need to be proportionately spread throughout the month with a 10% maximum or minimum being tested on a biweekly basis. And then the same thing, if you are in a red zone, then it will be 30% over the course of the month with 15% maximum or minimum. So if we were in either an orange or red zone, if the results of our testing, if the random sampling generates nine or more positive cases in our building, or if we have a sample size of more than 300 weekly tests and achieves a positivity rate of 3% or higher, then we would be required to close. But just a little idea of what 20% is district-wide. District-wide 20% is 373 students. Our schools range from 38 to 101. And so if we tested over the course of a month, then 10% would be below that that 300 weekly number. So we would be looking at the nine or more, the nine or more. So could you go on to the next slide? So I did want to share with you some of our testing preparations to date. So we have signed an MOU with Albany County Department of Health, and what that enables us to do is test under their license. We get a number, their number, it's called the CLIA. And a number of districts have also signed this MOU, which was, which was vetted both with our insurance companies, Stacy and I, as well as with legal. So because of that, we were able to order and receive tests. They call them R-N-X-N-A-U tests. And it's a quick shallow nasal swab test. It's not the long test that hurts. So we did receive those tests today, again, at no cost. We've met with principals and nurses to determine testing teams. So a nurse will be on each team along with volunteer staff members. Someone would check in students or staff. It would be separate. Students and staff would be separate, but someone would do the check-in. The nurse would do the testing. We have to time for 15 minutes. And then there's a data entry component, which is called ECLRS. So we're readying our files for that. And then I know we sent some initial information, but we have consent forms that we're going to be sending all through Parents Square. And then the sentence that, along with a video that Erin did today showing a kindergartner, I believe, getting tested, so that parents will see that it was the simple test. So those are our preparations to date. We do not know when, if and when that will be designated in one of these zones, but we thought it was important to be prepared. I do need to thank the nurses for their readings on this, both last two staff development days and for their preparations and for reaching out. So. Any questions on this? So before I turn it over to Stacy to talk about the budget process, and then I'll jump back in, I do want to take this opportunity to publicly thank everyone in our co-school community for their efforts from school reopening on. And now as we go into hospital micro cluster zone testing, their adherence to protocols, their flexibility, their willingness to again do whatever it takes. I know that it can be exhausting at times, but I do need to take, to thank our entire school community for all the effort. So thank you. Stacy?
Thank you. So budget development process for the upcoming budget year 2021-22. As we talked about the last time we met, the budget development process is going to be challenging for this year, really, and that's related to the uncertainty around state aid. So since the last time we met, I don't have any updates, no new information available for state aid.
December is the big payment, but lack of notes at the end of the month.
December, we've seen very little for grants. We were hoping that we'd have something for grants. We've seen Title IV. We haven't seen anything for Title I or pre-K from 1920. We haven't seen any CARES money.
As far as the normal state aid?
Normal state aid, just a VLT payment of $127,000. That's it. So we did receive some information today, actually, that the treasurer shared with me for January early aid payments, so maybe that'll come before January 1. And that's under $2 million. I think it was about 1.8. It was excess class aid, a general aid payment. But really, what we're looking for is the 1920 closeout for our grants. We were expecting that this month, so the disappointment, we're not seeing anything anything substantial.
About the future pathways funding?
No, nothing for teacher-ready pathways, not our pre-K yet.
Probably about $650, $700 short, were we talking?
I mean, at this point, our whole, we're floating our whole fund balance at this point. So we're hoping that we made hole by the county for last year's taxes. Usually, we would get that in January, and usually we would get star in January. So we're definitely red for the month of December, not a good cash flow month, but we're hoping January will bounce back. So we don't know what this second wave of COVID is going to turn to the state, right? What it's going to look like as far as the financial impact to New York State? So that's an unknown. And March is the funding cliff. We see a large portion of our aid paid out in March, so that will be telling, and that's also the state's fiscal year-end. So March will really be telling for us for this year. So hopefully, we know before March in order for us to plan on. But March is the funding cliff for the state, so we'll definitely know in March. So we had a meeting late in November with Pester three stated planning. The December border regions, they're making recommendations to the state for the upcoming budget year. They're recommending that the cuts are based on wealth, that the charter schools have equal treatment, that the expense aid formularies are unchanged, flexibility with reserves, which we could really use that. And also, small districts, 4% should not be the cap because it's a cost. It's not even, it's basically a month's worth of expenses. It's not realistic. So again, we really could use that. And then they're also going to recommend eliminating the transparency report. State aid funds, we have to be careful about the transportation aid because we received that memo. We're not sure what they're going to do about the closure period for mid-March, April, May, June for last year. So we're just going to have to be cautious, have caution around that. And again, the 1920 files remain unsettled for our migrants, Title I being pre-K, and no 20% advances for Title I or the CARES. Okay, so that's impacting our cash flow as well as no update for the summer withhold at all. And smart school bonds claims are not being paid right now. So we're floating all that money. It's a bad situation. So I'm sorry that I continue to have learnings. How long is the future raise plan, playground? This, this is the final year. This is the last year. Yeah. So as far as budget process, we've historically used the line item budget approach, which is basically a rollover methodology. And then what we typically do is we put limitations on growth. So that's not going to work for this budget process. So the recommendation is going to be a zero-based budget approach, which is going to be very challenging. We've not done this as far as I'm aware, ever. So basically, we're going to have to start at zero, and we're going to have to identify what our requirements are from an operations perspective and for graduation perspective. And then we're going to have to take an additional step and identify, okay, beyond requirements, what are our needs, right? And then we're going to have to evaluate, come up with a tool to evaluate overturn on investment to make sure that we're concentrating on the right areas and we're impacting as many kids as we can. So this is going to look and feel a whole lot different to the buildings. The administrators, obviously, the board. And it's going to include some really difficult conversations because things that we've always done and things that we've always had might not be able to do.
Stacy, one concern I've had about this is the physical amount of time it's going to take prior to when we need to have budgets. So in the next few weeks, you could lay out a timeline?
So we have our first budget committee meeting next week. Yep. And so we're going to talk about the process and the methodology and the timeline, something realistic. And it's, it's really, it's Peggy, myself, and Pam, our treasurer, and the board members to start and to come up with a reasonable approach to this. Take a look at some tools. I'll reach out to Pester three, see if they have some tools that they recommend for return on investment. And we'll, we'll have something outlined right after that, I pretended to say. We'll talk about tonight, the state timeline, you know, the requirement.
Yeah, have all our stuff done.
Yes. Yep. Okay, so we talked about the zero-based and the performance-based, and what that kind of feel like. And really, the revenue, revenues really are going to be driving our budget, obviously. So state aid is really the elephant in the room. Tax levy, we need to set up a meeting with the city in January because we do have a large pilot coming off Brookfield. So we're going to have to talk to them, and then we're just going to have to make sure that any tax, we don't have any surprises. So we'll set up a meeting in January to make sure that we know what to expect and that our estimates are as good as they can be. And then we'll have conversations about the tax levy. Obviously, the Brookfield will impact the tax levy, but it'll be a communication to the public to let them know that if they're coming off a point, that they're moving on to the tax role and what that impact is, because it might look large initially. Then we had talked about fund balance and reserves till the last time that we had met, and we're not in a position to be able to balance any shortfalls using any fund balance or reserves. So that's not a resource that we're going to be able to use.
And Stacy, typically in that meeting with the, with the city, we invite board presidents and vice presidents.
Yes. Yep. It's usually with the mayor, the assessor, the controller, the district treasurer, yourself, the chairman, and then the board president and the vice president. And then usually, at the next board meeting, we would give an update, what was discussed at the meeting. We usually go over our tax records to make sure we do have a reserve and the bucks to make sure that we have enough left in that reserve and that we're not over. And then we talk about the tax role and any major changes in the city. And we talk about pilots as well, and incoming because that impacts the tax levy calculation. It's not a good timing from the city's perspective, because it's much earlier. So they don't have all their information, but unfortunately, you know, the school district's timeline doesn't really fit with the city's timeline, but it's the best we could do. Are there any questions?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to ask about the future pathways funding?
Yes, we have not received our 20% for future pathways for this year either.
So the, we've got, we've got 25 seniors that are registered, and that tuition is due less, less than a month? Are we in a position to pay that bill?
We will pay the bill. It'll be another due-to, due-from between the general fund and the federal fund. But we will pay the bill. Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just, you know, those poor kids are registered for classes, and if if we weren't able to, they'd all, they'd lose their semester, but dreadful, dreadful times.
Yes.
So just to expand upon what Stacy has discussed, after we have our budget committee meeting, we'll then meet with the administrators. Again, we'll set up meetings. It'll be in January. Last year, they were in December, but we'd like to wait till January this year with our building leadership teams at the building, with our teacher leaders and with representatives from departments that don't have teacher leaders, Stacy and I, and the building principals, whatever building it is, we'll be at those meetings. And again, we'll be talking the forum. We're revising our forum. It's going to look a little bit different this year. We'll be discussing priorities, and we'll be having some discussions there too on impact, but that will happen in January. Next slide. And what we wanted to do here was to just highlight, I know it's been a while since we looked at this, but the district beliefs and commitments, because these will also help us guide the the discussions about making sure that students are prepared for post-secondary success and support them through personalized achievement in academics and exposure to careers, making sure that student staffs and families are engaged in an environment that promotes caring, communication, wellness, and safety, making sure that students are immersed in learning to become creative thinkers, lifelong learners, effective problem solvers, communicators, and collaborators, and definitely being as innovative as possible in terms of maximizing the efficiency and equity of resources. So I thought that this would be a good time to, to just revisit these and let you know that they'll also guide wider discussions. Stacy?
So this is some school budget deadlines, but these are not internal processes. This is really state estimate requirements or OSC recommendations or requirements. So March 1, the tax levy calculation is due to the Office of State Control. April 3 will be the first of four legal notices. That was the date, time, and place of our public hearing and the annual budget vote that's required four times over a seven-week period. The 23rd is a deadline for us to adopt our budget and the property tax report card. And the petitions for board candidates will be due by April 28. May 4 through the 11th will hold our budget hearing, and it's presented in those three components, administrative, capital, and program. Our budget notice will go out to our voters the week of May 5 through the 12th. And then the annual budget vote and board of ed election will be held on May 18. The revote is statewide revotes, June 15. So again, when we meet as a budget committee, we'll talk about our internal timeline, and then I'll share that out in January. I wanted to just give a quick update on our small capital projects that we have going on. So we have the Ruhr project at the middle school and the Harmony Hill Boiler project. So they have received our final payout applications. And we received a small change order. It's a negative, so that's good for us. $2,700. So you'll see that on the next agenda. And we did receive our certificate of substantial completion for that project. So I can go ahead, and once we pay all the bills, we can go ahead and do the final cost report. I'll work with Rick Timms on that. And then we're expecting the Harmony Hill Boiler project, we're expecting all those same items this month, early next month. And so again, I'll work with Rick Timms to make sure that we're maximizing our aid on those projects when we complete the final cost report and submit those to the states, to the state. So we came in under budget on both projects, which is good. So we will have some money left over in our capital reserve, which we'll be able, will be able to use that towards the next project. So that's good. The voters will have to authorize whatever we use. And then we'll talk about the virtual meeting with Rick Timms. We had a virtual meeting with Rick Timms, and we discussed the the larger project and the timeline associated with that. And we do have some legal room. Initially, we had talked about a vote this upcoming May, which obviously it's not a good timeline. So we do have room in our debt schedule. That's when our debt comes, comes off. And we can, we can push it out a year if we choose to do so. But it is important that we have an RFP with a construction manager now. That's in order to make sure that our budgets and our planning is accurate, because they were really the experts in the market as far as pricing our constructions. So he talked about making sure that we bring someone on fairly soon for the construction management. And architects have said the same thing, so. I'll be working on that in January. Uh he also indicated that uh phase one would not be more than fifteen million dollars. And the building A ratio is about eighty-seven percent. And we talked about the focus area really being health and safety in our current environment. Building envelopes of roofs, windows, all that fun stuff. Uh in any efficiencies that, you know, we can capitalize on. Our our architects have been working on our building condition survey is due next year. Uh but they've been working on it this year because it's important that those items are identified and they're included in a capital project because we don't want to be in a position where we had identified them and then there's a problem. We didn't include those in the in the project, right? Uh so they're working on that now and they will be presenting, I think, January, probably in January. Right. And then also we did have a Department of Labor audit. It's the second one in two years. This was for asbestos. Uh that's that that was this week. So that went fairly well. We shouldn't expect a report anytime soon because they're short-staffed and backlogged. But they did, uh we were missing some records from nineteen ninety-two and two thousand and ten. I guess in two thousand and ten, they might have been pulled for the capital projects. But at any rate, they had some recommendations to add the dugouts and the sheds uh to the plans, but uh overall it went well. Let me sure that expect a good report. Dugouts of what? What's that? The dugouts? The softball dugouts, the the man-made ones. They said because they have roofs, we have to include that in the plan. Down the aisle. Sorry. They were built maybe, I think, maybe four years. Before you were on the board.
So can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, it's time. Getting an agreement or putting out our fee for administration management firm. So the goal here is for just them to kind of keep us in line um with what our plans will be.
Yes.
What what's the expense involved in doing that? And and because we wouldn't be putting anything out for over a year, is do we risk having outdated information at that point in time? Listen, this is not my wheelhouse. So, you know, the question is out of, I have no idea. So but, you know, we are getting, going into an agreement with a construction management team. Just wondering what that is going to be, um, you know, budgetary impact and I get that we need to do it. But, you know, the first thing I think of is, okay, well, you know, even going to going anywhere right now, prices are up, everything costs more. Are we going to really get a a value of of what we're actually going to spend if we're doing it a year later? I I don't know. And do we risk anything by doing that?
So the bulk of the cost will be um included when the project, when the project is actually going on. Just like the the architects, they they push the cost really to to the project. So um I would guess less than twenty thousand dollars, I'm guessing. So I can.
So say you're going to look at what we did last time and just look at the structure of the contract.
Right. Yeah, I can look at some historical. I would guess twenty thousand, but the bulk of the costs are with the project. Both the architects and our financial advisor suggested that we get them on board sooner rather than later. And that is because when we are uh talking about our plans and what the associated costs are, uh really the expert in the room is the construction manager. So it's really important that the numbers are as accurate as possible when we're planning uh to make sure that we can get everything that we possibly uh can in in the amount of, you know, in the amount of money that's allocated for each of our buildings. So so both of those experts said that it's critical that we do that in the next couple of months.
Stacy wasn't some of it also, so that we didn't have plans all set and then the construction managers said would say those won't really work out operationally.
Right. So the feedback is if you bring the construction manager on too late, it negatively impacts the budget as well as you might have some some serious change orders.
Usually.
As a result, yeah. So that was the feedback from both of the experts.
So those are my layperson charges.
I guess uh my other question, um you, we had mentioned the budget process, how it's going to be very different, though, from a zero-based approach. I'm wondering, had you had mentioned meeting with the the building teams and and going over priorities and goals and trying to keep those things aligned with with our budget goals. And um that that's a fairly new um document this year, and I just wanted to put it out there uh to the board if that's something that we we want to have discussion about, if everybody's happy with with, you know, what we're looking at. Because we're looking at really a budget for next year. Um these are our beliefs and commitments that we we had developed this year. And I know that we were all highly involved in developing this this document, and I just want to make sure that um as a board, everybody's comfortable moving forward to be using this as a base to develop the budget. I am, um because I feel like I did.
Turning to the belief statements?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's exactly.
I would, you know, I'd like that. You know, I'd like to add language about um career planning.
That that was from you.
So Margaret, it it does say on here, all students will be prepared for post-secondary success and support through personalized learning, achievement in academics and exposure to careers.
So I I would um.
So I mean, even if you want to.
I would like to refine that somewhat. I would like to recommend a refinement for that.
So is it something that we are able to to sit and look at now that we have this presentation that we can kind of go through, see if there's any any changes, updates, if there's any tweaks that we want to make that we as a board can kind of make those decisions before, I know that your budget committee meeting is next week.
Yeah, but I don't think that's going to delve into what.
That's the process, what what we're going to do.
And so we definitely can look at the timeline of the buildings after that.
Yes. Not too far after.
No, it's good. And, you know, I'm even happy to discuss it at our next meeting, if you, you know, give everybody an opportunity to do that. I just wanted to bring it up to make sure that we're moving in a path that is something that everybody's still committed to and 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 these are her priorities and what what we're looking at. Um, you know, Pete wasn't really involved, um but Helen was.
So it's also a policy, so we could also, you know, manage, might also be able to manage the policy.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Margaret. I was going to bring up the same point, so I, thank you.
Same page. Um I guess, and then the last question I have, I know that you said uh we we haven't received any money from start smart schools. Um so this is, you know, a tech and access question. Uh where are we at with our families who are are having to go remote, our classrooms that are having to go go remote? How are we able to staff in a way that that everybody is still learning on a daily basis, you know, having access either virtually, you know, or in person, um depending upon how these cases are coming up as we're having to quarantine staff. And then that kind of goes into this whole uh micro cluster testing. What do we do if we walk in the door and a teacher tests positive within fifteen minutes and we have to send them home and we haven't had time? I'm just wondering, all of these things are kind of just building up in my brain, like, how do you, how do you plan for something like that, right? And if if we've even thought about that and if we do have something in place to kind of uh address the potential of the what it.
So a lot of questions. So one of the things we have to do, uh Dr. Terzey has to sign up on on the testing and so we have to put a protocol in place where someone becomes positive, test positive. So that's the testing protocol, right? What do we do then? And then, you're right, like, it depends how many, what would be the impact be? So I can talk to you based on what's been happening now, uh when the principal calls, and this is in small, right? Class here or class there, um the principal asks, as they're calling the parent, they ask, do you have a device at home? And then we have been able to give the devices to those those families the next day when they're also picking up materials and so that in our, so in our approach with the the quarantines, we get, we have been able to to meet the needs of of the students. The teachers are teaching the remote class remotely and then tuning in. It gets a little more complicated at the, at the middle and high school level because those teachers and students that are quarantined, they might be together in that class, but then there's other other classes. So we we have worked out different models for that, for that as well, but also making sure that everyone gets their, gets a phone book. In the long term, um again, if this happens at a larger level, we are still, we have heard that our phone books, the one one hundred and fifty for Lansing and Harmony Hill were being shipped the first week of December. We need to follow up on that. They said it would take a few weeks, so hoping that they will be here at the end of the summer. We need to, we need to uh check on that. We saw that we gave a a more recent tech survey. We had pretty good response rates at the elementary level. Uh the response rates were a little bit lower secondary. Now we're cross-referencing that with our students who were newly registered, who might have responded, responded and uh Mackenzie Gregory Lonzac has been making phone calls to try to complete that, and then we'll have a better idea of what targeted and who who needs that. So in the future, so that we wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't have to call to find out. So those are some of the points.
Are those the only two schools that are deficient tech-wise?
Um, so based on the results of this survey, so we we won't, because we haven't analyzed the total survey results, I can't tell you a definitive answer. Based on the results of the survey, it looks like me and Skype will be pretty close to um to to be being okay with what they have between that and the and the parents who responded that they have devices. We have more devices coming in for the high school as as well. Um but I don't, I I can't tell you about the middle and high school yet, but I can put that together.
So right now, if 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 we have a positive case, you know, taking the micro cluster testing out, if if we have a positive case and students are at home, teachers at home, and they're all learning virtually, is that, is that, are they doing it in a synchronous way or or it's happening throughout the day or is it?
So at the elementary, it's totally synchronous happening throughout the day because that's the teacher of that pod. Um, you know, quarantined with that class. Um at the um middle and high. So 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 for example, the high school right now, Laura and I have been, you know, talking today and so there are certain classes that the teacher is quarantined and the students are quarantined, so they are they are synchronous. There's other classes that um the students are home, but the teachers, the teachers are in school. So um there are some some different models. So if a teacher has the same class virtually on the next day for for the, you know, for the virtual learners, then they're going to be sending links for those students to be able to to join in at at that time. Um some teachers will be streaming at at the same time depending on their makeup of their class. And if it's not um streaming or the virtual model, then assignments will be posted on School G, but the teachers um will be checking, will be checking in with the students individually. So right now, uh with the high school, because that means there's a number of students in a number of different classes, we're working through those ones.
So is it something where um if if it was asynchronous, that there there is a set office hours or where where kids know at this time I can talk to a teacher?
So they'll get a link for either this is the virtual class I'm joining.
Yeah.
Of course, this is the virtual class I'm in quarantine with, so here's the link. It will shortly in School G.
Yeah.
And if it's, if it's not, then this is the time to check in. Anything else?
Just to go over.
Sorry, Matt, go ahead.
Uh just from my under understanding, just to make sure of getting this all appropriate, but from our understanding, our our schools seem very safe. We have no cases where, like, our our practices are working. We have no cases where anyone, we've seen any transmission from someone who's in the school to anybody else. And um and, you know, it probably safer than if we were closed and people were at home or doing whatever else they might be, uh maybe not following all the practices that we are. And with that, I think maybe the big limiting factor might be, I know we've had to quarantine some staff in cases and if that got too high, then that might be what forces us to close rather than on something else, for instance. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that that's correct. So that in any of the precautionary quarantines or the practice of quarantines that were were done under the direction of the Department of Health, there was no spread within that uh that pod or within the classrooms um to date for us. So there has been no in-school spread. Um and yes, we've become.
Which is awesome. Thank, thanks, everyone. To your point earlier about all the work that we had done over the summer and everyone and within the district has done to try to keep things safe. It's huge kudos to be where we are in December with that being the case.
But there would be a tipping point with with staffing. So for example, if there was this case here that impacted, you know, four teachers and X amount of students and then another case that impacted seven teachers, it there would be a there would be a tipping, you know, there would be a tipping point. And so um, you know, that's the uh so both with the the middle school and the high school, that was the first thing we we looked at too as we're making the decisions before we communicated, would we be able to, you know, ma- maintain with the staffing levels? And what makes it even more difficult right now is, as you know, through the budget cuts, we've cut back um on teachers, we've cut back on aides, so there's less coverage that can be arranged internally. And um and also, it's not a good time to find substitute teachers because there's a substitute teacher shortage. So um so we're looking at all those things and and if something, if we did have to go virtual, it would be because of staffing levels.
Okay, yeah, so aside from being forced to.
No one's finding that.
Right, right. But but aside from being forced to close by, from the Department of Health for and our number of cases being so high, the other scenario that we're looking at is that because of quarantining and things, we simply don't have the number of staff we would need to run the building properly.
Correct.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure I understood the things that were kind of on the table floating out there. Thank you. Okay, I was just trying to make sure I understood the things that were kind of on the table floating out there. Thank you.
So with the the COVID numbers. Like we said, all the the positives that we've seen in the school districts have been brought in from the outside. And they haven't been transmitted. I know this is, I don't know if this has been said in a formal way, but I don't think we gave enough credit to the children, to the kids from the beginning of this. Everybody made kind of jokes and fun about little John coming in with a red mask and leaving the blue one because he's, well, this isn't happening. The kids are doing so great through all the grades, and I think they should be commended for that. On top of that, I think what we're saying, you know, if we start to get a couple more cases, or the cases. Don't go in our favor as opposed to who they're contacting. I wonder if we could put something else out there, just to reaffirm what it means to the school. If parents or staff members are coming to school sick or not doing their own due diligence on their selves or on their kids. Before they remember, because luckily we've called these things early, we've been able to quarantine, they haven't had a massive impact. It just takes one person speaking to the wrong person transmitting that, and it's going to throw a huge span in the water. If we could put something out, just reaffirming just how important this is and reaffirming how well the kids have done. We just need to keep them going a bit for a bit longer.
Yeah.
By a bit longer, I mean however long this takes.
So so reaffirming our reaffirming our health at that station, reaffirming.
Well, just reaffirming how important it is because, you know, the health, the health at this station, you know, you get the the text message at seven o'clock. You get the email or whatever. But it's like anything else, assuming you can become numb to it, you're like, oh, I forgot to do that. Oh, the kid was ninety-seven point six. And you just, I mean, I think we need to reaffirm to people just how important it is to be accurate, be diligent. Because we are, anytime, any of us are one step away from this going horribly wrong. This really is still a entire role. We've only had one person get the vaccine so far, that was a ninety-year-old lady over in England. So, I mean, good luck with yourself. And but, yeah, the kids are doing great. We just need to reaffirm how well we need to carry on doing it.
And you're right, the kids have done excellent, just just watching them from the from the little list of pre-parents, they have done amazing.
Well, we just explained to them what we needed to do. Y'all need to wear masks, not to protect yourself, but to protect everybody else. And it's kind of sad that the kids got it so fast, and yet some of the people are still kind of resisting.
There was a learning curve, but I saw like. From day one through a couple of months, the parents got exceptionally better at drop off and pickup as well.
Right.
It's a mess for the school. We will work on something.
I just would like to add to what Pete said. The circle is kind of getting smaller. We we went through the summer basically with, what, three or four cases in the city? And, you know, now we have quite a few. So I I think it's, I do think it's a good idea to reinforce to the parents. However you want to word that, that the circle, you know, it's closing in on us. I mean, we're at what, fifty-some cases in Cohoes now? And I know some of those are, many of those are at the Eddy, but. It's people going into the Eddy, maybe it's just people are bringing it in. So I think parents need to realize that. The numbers are rising in our city, maybe not at an alarming rate, but I think, I mean, I I see them rising, and I think they need to know that. I pay a little more attention to it maybe than a lot of people, but. It doesn't hurt to remind people what's happening. It's not getting better right now.
That's that's good, good communication that we can, we can work on. So thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And I mean, I, to to that point, I think what's nice is that, like, we've seen the vaccines starting to, right, like, hope is on the horizon. You you can, you can see it now, and that wasn't the case when we were talking about this last spring. And what we were going to do and all our planning, like, you know, who who knows how long it was going to be? But I, why would we screw this up now? Like, we can see what's what's ahead of us. It's, we're, you know, getting closer. So I think that that's a promising part of the message. It's like, we just got to hold out for, you know, not forever, and that's. I think that's promising. So I don't know how we can communicate that part of it too, but it's like, yes, we have to hold out now, but we we do have hope ahead of us.
So I do want to congratulate the kids also. I I really only see the kids come out of Harmony Hill or go into Harmony Hill. I never, ever, ever see a child with no mask, and never. It's it's unbelievable. The kids, as we all know, kids are more, a little more resilient than adults sometimes, but. They've done an unbelievable job. So cheers to the kids, too. I agree.
That I I had a little crow at the beginning of this. I really thought we were going to, with the elementary grades especially, I thought we'd have to shorten the day. I just didn't think that the kids would would hold up all day with these masks. And at the time, Rick said the the kids will persevere, said the kids are resilient, they'll be fine, and he was right. And the the kids have been, from from all I can see, the the kids have been wonderful and and they were resilient. And I I I'm glad Pete brought that up, and I think it's 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 very, very, it's inspiring to see these young kids step up the way they have.
Any other questions, comments?
Nadia, did you still have something? I think I interrupted you when.
Nope, I think everybody else just covered it.
I I think that's the board discussion of everything presentation related or. Is there anything else agenda related? I know that I wanted to call out, we have. A small donation from Coca-Cola, so thank you to them. And then also on the agenda is the retirement of Stephen Lackman. And just want to. Express the district's thanks for all. All the work that that he has done throughout the the years with all of our students and how much they've benefited from him being in the district. So thank you.
I just also wanted to, you know, recognize the fact that we're planning to our unpaid coaches today. You know, without without them agreeing to, you know, do the work for our kids without any compensation. You know, we wouldn't be able to do these fun things that, you know, get kids involved and engaged. So thank you to our unpaid volunteer coaches. And, yeah, congratulations to Steve.
I did have a public comment from. From Bill Smith that I wanted to ask, which is more of a Stacy question, and it may actually get into. The meeting that we have with the the mayor and the staff there. But the question was about if Norlite is closed, would there be any tax hardship on the district? And I I assume that that is the case. I don't know what to, what degree, or Stacy, you know, offhand, my guess is no. But if we could look into that, and then also, I know that there, I believe there was some discussion on even like an additional tax levy on Norlite as well. So on the other hand, it could have a positive impact on the district. So I think that that's a conversation we can have with our our meeting with the mayor as far as what those kind of impacts are to the, you know, the. Tax rule as far as what it means for us as the district next year.
So they answered the odds.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, then I could use a motion for the board to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make it.
Second. Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion? Mrs. Carrie?
Yes.
Mr. Emily?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. And I didn't quite hear Mrs. Dion come through, but I did see her move her mouth, so I'm assuming.
I said yes.
With that, I don't have other other questions unrelated to anything on the agenda or the presentation that anyone on the board would like to discuss.
I I know we're we're all very grateful, appreciative for so much work by advice, I need for from the kids and staff. But I really think we we do need to express our gratitude to Peggy for for taking over the reins on on the shortest of notice. And and doing, not only doing the work as superintendent, but but the work of the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And doing all this for for no additional compensation and. Myself and the board, I want to publicly say how grateful we, how grateful we are for all you've done and all you're doing.
Thank you, Peg.
Thank you, Mark. Well said. With that being the case, our next meeting is next year in twenty twenty-one. January sixth, except for those of us who are on the budget committee, but we won't talk about that. January sixth at six o'clock and after that, January twentieth. And also live stream, you'll find us the information that you usually can find on the website. And send out about how to join the meetings at six o'clock. And if I could get a motion to enter into executive session at seven oh seven to discuss contract negotiations with our teachers association.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrie?
Yes.
Mr. Emily?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. I'll see those of you on the board in a minute.